Standing for the pledge and then please remain standing for prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Father, we come to you with heavy hearts for the loss of John Fields. We pray that he's using your arms right now. We pray for his loved ones. We pray that they are comforted by strength and by a presence that only you can provide and certainly one that exceeds and surpasses all understanding. We just pray for the community of Union City. It's not just a part of the city. It's not just one side of town that lost someone. It was a community. And so we thank you for your promises and that your promises are true and that you have him in your care as well as his loved ones. We thank you for this meeting. We thank you for each and every individual that braved this time to be here. And even as we attempt to fully acknowledge the rules and the guidelines and everything that we're under and keeping our distance from one another, we thank you that nonetheless we were able to come together under you and bless our decision, make it tonight with your wisdom, help us make decisions that will best reflect your love for this community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
If we are live on this meeting, am I correct, Mr. Mayor? Okay, so Bill Richmond was the lone Zoom participant that joined us and sure enough, I've lost the feed. Bill, if you can hear me at all, I hope you can join via TV or online. Facebook Live through the Kiss TV link. And I will work to pull the Zoom back up. We actually did get the Zoom adjusted so we can accommodate as much time as we need to. I put the meeting in for three hours. It better not go three hours. But I will work to get this back up. But in the meantime, Jane, if you would, go ahead and take the full call.
Brandon Almore.
Present.
Claude Lahey.
Here.
Anthony Conklin.
Here.
Tim Heiss. Tito Fries.
Here.
All right. Consent agenda. Trust that everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes and claims. If so, I would entertain any questions. If not, then I would entertain motion for approval. Yes, Tito.
Where the minutes refer to my comments or question about the eco-vehicle system, it was a key, important point that I think should be included in the minutes that there had been a delay in doing that audit as a result of the COVID-19 situation.
Correct. That is correct.
I move that we include that in the minutes, please.
First, we'll move and accept the consent agenda as presented with the aforementioned tradition. You have a first, we have a second.
I'll say it.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, negative. Consent agenda approved. Department reports. Again, extending our condolences to Mayor John Fields' family and all his loved ones. And we do have the flags that have masked and that will be all week. And certainly be keeping our community in thoughts and prayers. Certainly, I'd like to pledge, I guess publicly, anything that we... I feel like I know these gentlemen and our clerketers are well enough that if I extended this on behalf of all of us, that if there's anything we can help with, to please reach out. These are outstanding individuals I'm flanked by. And so we just, we love this community and we see it as one. And we just want, we want it to be strong and we want it to be as good as it can be. So don't hesitate to reach out and just know we're thinking about you. Other news, we do have, you know, missing like a distant memory. Ted Lady said, hey, next Thursday, I need to talk to you about next Thursday, which is this Thursday afternoon. It was about Ball State, their presentation from the Architecture Program for over here at the Apothecary Building. And I completely spaced it that was still happening because everything just seems like it's shut down. But those students continued to work on this project the entire semester and they were working on remotely. So we will have a Zoom meeting on Thursday for their output and their vision for the Apothecary Building and where everything they're going to have set up for that building. And again, that grant submission was already made April 15th to World Development.
Is that going to be open for public, council members?
Yeah, we, in fact, Steve, is Steve still in the building?
Yes, he is.
Yeah, if you, it's okay to have them forward their email addresses to you if you want to forward them on to Ted.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll take care of that as soon as I can.
Super. See, if you want to, do you remember what the time of the meeting was?
I know it's Thursday. It'll be 11 o'clock.
11 o'clock, Thursday at 11 o'clock. And it'd be JP Hall, Professor of Architecture, Ball State University and his class, his five students that... That was their project for the spring. So we're going to be anxious to see what they, what they share. So that was encouraging. We are getting six cameras officially now in the park through engineer or tech person, but I'm not going to be sure where they're going to be at. So that's all I have to say about that. Good news from NDOT. Brad Mink, a very diligent, very hardworking streets and department guru and leader, let me know that we get the water main valve replaced on Columbia Street, but they were talking about the vibratory rulers is what it's called, that they would be using on Columbia Street as part of the paving project. And he said, the bad thing is they're probably still going to cause damage and they're going to go in and replace, you know, and... And I said, is there any alternative? And he said, well, they don't have to use vibratory rulers. But a lot of times, if I understand correctly, Monty, and certainly correct me at any point, I'm going to speak, that usually NDOT requires that for the projects, but there are exceptions that, you know, that are made. And so I reached out to NDOT and then they communicated with mine, communicated with... Sent a whole chain of communication and in fact, and so they will not be using vibratory rulers down Columbia Street, which will hopefully mitigate. It doesn't mean 100% there won't be issues, but it tremendously mitigates the opportunity for that vibration, that extreme pressure of causing any problem with our water mains.
They came close to guaranteeing one would break.
Yeah, yes, yeah. With one hook, with one hook, with the vibratory roller came to it.
They almost, pretty close to assure Brad that one would break if not now, it's a event.
Exactly. And the part of my OCD complex is the fact that if we get that repaved, I don't want to have to dig back into it shortly after it was paved because it's never the same again, right? And so that was my, my hope. And so sure enough, NDOT will not be using those or not be required milestone to be using those. So that was encouraging. And then we did have discussions about the pool and that is still a very, the pun intended, very fluid situation right now in terms of what news we may or may not find out at the end of this week. But we have decided not, we will not be hiring a pool manager. We do know that. And then, but we do have to have lifeguards on duty, obviously, or have lifeguards ready to go if there is like maybe for, say, a swim season competition. So we will be fully equipped for that if necessary.
So if there's no manager, then it probably won't be open for public?
Odds are really challenging right now.
Okay.
I'll put it that way.
Very likely direction.
Do we want to have it open to the public? Absolutely. We'd love to. Just with everything that we're confronted with right now and the unforeseen and from a cost perspective. Because it's also, it was discussed that it's challenging. If you delay the start of the season, then it makes it even more challenging for the people who have committed to work, to wait that long and then still work and try to work out scheduling and especially with a manager.
The one point Steve made about training for potential, for lifeguards that aren't already certified.
Yes, that was a great reminder.
Problem that lifeguards aren't certified. We don't have, lifeguards have to be certified that aren't already. The classes are not going to be, aren't necessarily available at this point to do that. So that is a problem.
So that, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jane.
Did, were, we're the ones who organized those classes?
No, no. We, where are those? Steve, where are those usually?
Generally between Delaware County YMCA and Ball State University, the indoor pools. And obviously with the COVID, everything's closed and nothing's open. So there's no classes.
Oh, yes. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Brandon, do you have any input regarding that while we're, while we're on that subject? The swim team with any hopes or aspirations?
I know we have a tentative schedule with other swim teams in the region that we typically compete against. I think it's still up in the air with them as well, whether they're going to have a swim team this year. So I mean, if they have, you know, they decide to not go forward with it, I mean, we wouldn't have anybody to swim against, you know, in terms of competition. So I think it's up in the air with a lot of, you know, folks in the region, whether or not that's a possibility even. And then when you come to competitions, I mean, you have groups of people together, I mean, congregating, watching the swim meet. You know, I'm not sure how that is really going to work out. It's, it really is a challenge and I'm not sure how we would move forward with it, you know. Having a competition without people watching, you know, or watching from outside of the fences, you know, that kind of thing. I don't know if we would want to go down that route or if, you know, anybody would have an appetite to do that kind of thing. So I mean, we haven't placed a tentative schedule. It's really kind of a compressed schedule. It's only about five weeks. I mean, there would be no, because typically we're starting the first week in May preseason practices actually over at the YMCA. We're not going to do that. So I mean, there's, you know, it's going to be compressed if, even if it goes. I mean, it would start, I think, June 9th and end June 11th or July 11th at, currently. That's what the tentative schedule looks like. So, yeah. We're just kind of waiting to see, you know.
Understand.
And we were looking to see what you guys were thinking about the pool too. Because if you guys weren't going to open the pool, I mean, there's no sense in even thinking any further.
What the status of the pool is.
Yeah, Dennis is still doing the normal, Dennis Swire, our department is still doing the normal maintenance and getting the pool ready. Because anybody that's ever on the pool, that's my report. If you don't open it for a whole season, then you're really behind eight more the next season in terms of all the things you have to do to remedy the gunk, if you will, perhaps is a better term. And so he's still prepping it as if it will be opened. There's minimum costs involved in that. Where the majority of our costs in operating the pool, it's from the personnel and just operating the pool, you know, from the staff and paying them and pool majors and so forth.
And that was kind of a question I had too, was, would be, you know, if, and I, just like anybody else, I think would want to have the pool open, you know, give the kids in the community and the families in the community a sense of normalcy, you know, in their summer. But if we were to not open the pool, what kind of cost savings would that go to, you know, the city? I mean, would there be anything?
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
Is it really?
Approximately.
So that's, that's a lot.
It's a lot money for a small community.
Yeah.
Indianapolis could, could, and I'm not making any disparaging remarks against, but they could spend that not only.
Yeah.
We feel that amount, you know.
That's a factor here. I definitely understand that and appreciate that. I'm sure we could use it elsewhere. I mean, if we reappropriate it.
But as, as it goes, that's, that's mostly accommodating opening to the public. If it were, if there were accommodations for the, for the swim team potentially, the costs aren't going to be dramatic. I don't, I mean, it's going to, it's going to, it's going to take a little bit, but it's not going to be, it's not like it's going to cost that much if we just open for, for competition. So.
Sorry, I didn't understand.
He said, we could air it.
We could air it.
Oh, my gosh.
That's a good one too for, for.
Potential competition, right?
Yeah.
But so, so I, I, yeah, I don't think we should consider that we should say for the swim team, it's, you know, it's going to be in your, in the, in the club's ballpark.
Well, I'll definitely take that back. I mean, I know there's some inquiring minds that kind of want to know whether or not it's going to be a go or not. And I mean, everything's kind of, just kind of been on hold.
Yeah, I think, Jane, and thinking back too, and what we talked about before the worst meeting this afternoon and then now, it probably would move us to see what lifeguards, if any, do have license, license that are valid for this coming season.
There's about seven that had, that would still be valid this year.
Okay.
But although seven have not applied, we have the call.
So the four that applied, I mean.
I think we might have one or two. We've only, we only have four that applied.
Right.
So I mean, but we can do phone calling, I'm just to see how many of those would be going to lifeguard at meets.
Yeah, because that's what I'm here. So what would they have the pool, pool front for meets?
I think typically we just have one.
Oh, just one? Okay.
And then how many meets? Well, but if you, if you have swim practice though, you'd have to have lifeguards at the swim practice.
The coaches are typically, I find, yeah. I don't think we've ever had lifeguards at the, at the practices. I mean, everybody's watching everybody. I mean, it's.
We should have had lifeguards on, on the pool deck if they're playing back in the water.
Well, I mean, the coaches, I think, I think they're certified.
They might be certified.
If coaches are certified, then that serves that purpose.
Yeah, but at the meets, they're doing other things. So they have.
Yeah, yeah.
Meets you don't want to depend on.
Right.
Well, thank you for.
Yeah, and we also have some concerns that, I mean, with everything kind of going on, our numbers are going to dip in terms of kids signing up. I mean, we typically do, you know, a kind of a drive to get people, you know, kids involved at school, you know, both on the Sedoah side and here and, you know. But there's concerns that our numbers are going to be down anyway. So, I mean, there's things we can do. I mean, social media and what have you to get the word out, but.
Well, in terms of, to your point earlier too, having some sense of normalcy for kids, for something to do. One, just for lack of a better idea that I've had thus far, the bicycles that we accumulate over time that are left abandoned or recovered and never claimed. I propose repurposing them for kids that don't have bicycles in the community. To encourage people, kids that ride their bikes for the summertime. If they don't own a bike, to somehow establish where we can provide one for them.
They pick up a bag of trash.
If they pick up a bag of trash, okay. There goes your summer fun kids, but.
Come to the city building, pick up your bag, fill it with trash, you get a free bike.
Still a whole one from the kitchen.
Hey, creativity is really.
But that, no, it's not like. But I say that just to express to you guys, if you guys have ideas, you think it would be good where they, the kids could be safe and still be out and doing something, bring those ideas forward. Because if opening a pool is indeed not going to be an option, there's going to be other athletes that we need to try to come up with for them to fill their summertimes. So, so thank you for that reminder, my brother. So regarding, we have department heads. Don't think, Steve, you don't have anything for us at the moment, correct? Okay, Jane? Okay, council members. Let's, let's switch it up. Let's start with our school representative.
Here we go. Unfortunately, the school news is pretty dry at the moment. After looking at our e-learning schedule, I believe we have three weeks left. So wow. We are getting towards the end. It doesn't feel like the end, but we are getting towards there. I haven't heard any updates from Mr. Black or Mr. Adams in regards to graduation or to any usual ceremonies that are held. I know that they are considering doing the senior awards banquet for like the scholarship night virtually. So some form of online so that those students who receive scholarships can still be informed. Because I know that kind of can decide a lot when it comes to colleges and education, you know, what kind of scholarships you get from that. That's about the only updates I have on that. I did reach out to Mrs. Marker, who is the high school arts teacher. I wanted to reconnect with her about the project that the city council was interested in with designing a, a city entrance sign of some sort. So I'm hoping to hear some good news from her. I even told her maybe that would be a perfect e-learning project to give their students since I imagine there's not a lot of great options for an art teacher trying to do, you know, e-learning for something like that. So I'll, I'll be excited to hear back from her on that and I'll share with the city council what I hear. I did end up having a great conversation with the Versity Blood Sitters of Indiana and with the Cooney Blood Sitters of Dayton. I have two dates in May, May 22nd and May 29th for a mobile blood drive. So one of those dates will probably be the one that we get here in Eden City. And then I've been reaching out to some of my FK contacts over in Rochefell and Shenandoah to see if maybe we can bring a mobile blood drive to one of those, to those cities for that additional date that I have. So we're getting some good work done, you know. I fill all the seniors right now. I was looking for the, the signs over there. I didn't know what was going on. We're continuing on, you know, we're stuck in the situation we are. We're doing the best with what we can. That's, that's what I advise everybody to do right now. You know, you can't, can't really change where we're at, but you can go out and still make great things happen. So we'll continue on work.
Good job. Thanks for sharing.
I've got a question. How many of your fellow classmates are still potentially renting tuxes and/or the women have already bought dresses that they wanted to potentially do a prom walk around town?
Yeah. Actually, that's a really great idea. I know, especially with the girls, that for a lot of them, they've already purchased prom dresses and a lot of them can't return them because they get all, you know, modifications and all that kind of stuff. And of course, when you do that, you can't return it. So that actually, that's a really great idea. I know that there has been some conversation between myself and some of the tech people up at the high school about still doing some type of nomination process for prom king and queen through videos or TikToks. You know, something fun just to still get that prom king and queen nomination. So maybe that could be a nice little side project to go along with that. Because yeah, we could still do some of the social distancing, you know, doing the walking. I don't know if we'll be allowed to have, you know, like arms around dates or anything like that, but. Really, yeah, we could still walk on that kind of stuff. Yeah, yeah, that would make for an interesting picture right there.
We don't know who they are.
But that's a good idea. I'm going to write that down and I'm going to reach out to our tech department and maybe just send out a poll to our high school students if that's something they're interested in.
Derek?
You could use the stage out back and you guys could do your prom walk around the sidewalk and come up behind the stage like we do the album parade.
Yeah, about artists in park.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And you've got plenty of room to socially distance.
That's sweet.
I like that. Now that's a really good idea. I'll check into that. I'll see what I can do because I have, I have my suit already to go, so I'd be excited to do something right now. Awesome. I'll check into that.
Trying to come up with something. I don't know what I'd do if it was my senior year.
Yeah, yeah. Right now, they're just kind of hanging up in the closet. So I, I think a lot of the students would be very excited to come up with something where they could still dress up, even if it's not traditional prom walk or anything like that. Hey, you know, at least get some use out of this.
Absolutely.
I like that. I'll check into that and see what we can do.
Good suggestion. Tito?
I just wondered, I don't know if you're going to talk about this later, but just wanted to underline that the Union City has paid 1.3 million dollars as a settlement of the wind turbine litigation to the company. I noticed some commentary on social media about certain rumors and I just want to assure citizens that I have reviewed, we've all reviewed the documents, and I saw nothing that would indicate any wrongdoing. Okay, I'm looking directly at the camera, right? Looking directly at everybody. I saw nothing that would indicate any wrongdoing. So I know there's concern. I know the reason for the concern. But no, I honestly, I would love to be able to say more, but I want to get the city in trouble and I want to get myself in trouble. So, but, but there's nothing that would, that I saw that, that was any wrongdoing. So no need to go down that route on the rumor. Did have a question. With the work that's being, that was being done on Columbia Street, State Route 28 traffic was directed down Howard. In previous city councils meetings, we had mentioned that Howard Street had suffered some damage and had some sinkholes that had developed when we had redirected traffic from, you know, for Heritage Days. And so when, with the work on Columbia Street, the traffic did, semi trucks were going down Howard Street. And so some citizens wanted a clarification, what is, I mean, why didn't we do that? Is Howard Street okay? Did we fix the sinkholes and that kind of thing that people need an update?
It's not actually a detour. It's just where they go. The detour is 27, it's in south on 27 to 32. And if the trucks just come into town that way, then you see where the road's closed. So they just either, a lot of them are on Plum too.
Yeah.
They either go up Plum or Howard. So the state will not detour traffic onto the city street. They'll always use a state highway. But it's like, yeah, those trucks come down here, they're going to go where they're going to go.
It's basically local traffic only, but then, and some of those trucks that detoured on those streets are also local.
So that wasn't a decision to go down Howard Street? Is Howard Street okay though? I mean, are there sinkholes?
It's never, it's never good to have, those streets are not really designed for that heavy traffic like that, heavy truck traffic. Hopefully this, no longer than this will be, will be okay.
I think the primary sinkhole that was, that's been referred to in the past was the one that was at Carter Street or the area that pigged in at Carter intersection.
Division now.
Well, Division, no, no, I mean years before. Yeah, Division, Howard.
Yeah, it wasn't Carter Street years ago.
We had one at, up by Carter a number of years ago that was, that was repaired, was like that. Then we just recently had the one at Division too. But the one on Carter was the one I was thinking about.
So there wasn't actually one on Howard Street proper?
Yes, Howard and Division. It was, it was a huge sinkhole. It's been fixed.
But it was right around a manhole and it had some of the old clay tiles door lines in it that broke loose from the manhole. But all that water, and that water comes down in pretty good grade there. It just started swirling around that and it took out all the gravel and dirt down, a lot of it down.
You could park almost a semi truck.
It was pretty bad.
How many yards did we put? Was it two, two trucks, 18 yards of flowable film?
Flowable film in there, yeah.
So two, two cement mixture loads, two full, you know, nine yard truck loads of flowable film in, which was like similar to cement. And then that didn't, that didn't entirely fill it. That was just brought it up within a few feet of the road and it was filled from there. It was a huge hole. Luckily, it didn't cave in. And that would be, if you had, if it had a really heavy truck cross that and the, it's potential, it could have caved in and just really created a really giant hole, taken out the, we didn't lose the manhole or the whole structure. And jeez, if we'd have lost that structure, what would that have been? Twenty, $30,000. It was expensive anyway, but if we lost that structure, it'd have been a $50,000 job to repair that.
Yep.
Yeah, that's a good question. And that's, that made everybody a little nervous when they had this road closed here because the traffic was being diverted and the way it was, that way it was flowing. Any other questions?
Oh, no, that's all from me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Tim? I have. Nick?
A couple curiosity things. I don't know if we've kind of discussed these lately. The house tear down grant that we were talking about, commercial buildings and a bunch of houses, did we apply for that?
World Development, so that's who we're going through. Because the OKRA did away with theirs.
That's what I'd heard, OKRA, yeah. So is World Development, like, has that been applied for? Is that still?
They completed. David Keiser has applied for that.
Okay. And then for current houses that the city owns, has any progress or discussion been around whether they're A, going to be auctioned for people to potentially rehab, B, torn down, or C, another option?
We have not had that discussion to that clarity. We've got two right now. I'm trying to get through the courts, but it's been a backlog because of COVID in terms of getting these to address so they can be torn down because they are nuisance in the terms of drug habitation and.
Yeah.
So that's why we're trying to move quick on this. The others, we've not had the discussion. It would move us to have some type of clarity around what we think would be the best route to go. I don't know if this is the form for it now or you guys are going to put it on the, the subject of, put it on the council agenda for the next meeting? put it on the council agenda for the next meeting and bring your ideas to the table, what we think?
I think that's a good idea. Give us some thought.
Put that on the council agenda for the next meeting and bring your ideas as to what, and I would be a good thing too, if each of us go around and look, because I've got a couple of them in my mind. I know one is not sound. But then there's another, it's like, well, that, you know, to your point, it'd be a possibility.
And like, I've talked to a few people that flip houses that would be interested in potentially paying a little, not like thirty grand, but like three grand for this property to then put forty grand in it and then sell it for money. So there's some structures that we could utilize and then there's some that are still falling behind.
Can we get the addresses of the ones that we would be talking about? Something like you're talking about. We can go around and take a look and see what, you know, we're talking.
There was an Excel sheet of that?
Yeah, and if you send your email address on forward to the Excel sheet, it's got all the combination addresses.
Okay.
And then the other thing I was just curious on with the, the brick building we took down here at the corner of Pearl and Howard, we've kind of just left it. Is it a possibility we can finish that out with either gravel or put concrete, the new walk around there? I've had a couple of people just ask about that, so I'm happy to head that up.
I thought that gravel was the plan.
Yeah.
I, I believe that we just want to let it settle for a month and just see what happens and see what, where they need to fill in before they got too involved in finishing anything.
Yeah, because there's some natural settling that's going to take place. And then there's also a statue that's to go in by the Legion that Ted Leyd has arranged for, it's, I think it's, if, now we're sort of incorrect. Don't quote me on this, I find things to say in front of camera, but I think it's the same gentleman that did it. He's local, like we did the statue. Yes. Yes, thank you, thank you. I think it might be that individual that did this statue as well.
Pretty sure it is, yeah.
And, and so that along with three flags for Legion and then the mural that was applied for, through the community foundation, and I'm not sure when he's supposed to hear back from that, but I know the mural is supposed to be on the side of Legion. The Legion's actually painted, have it painted.
Oh, cool.
It's painted, it's the building, not the mural painted, but the building painted. And then the artist will do the mural on top of that.
Have we discussed what's the plan for that property? Are we giving it to Legion, the Art Depot? Is it gonna be overflow parking?
I, I'm not partial one way or another. I mean, I know parking's been discussed. We've gained maybe a couple of cases out there.
The Art Depot is supposed to be.
It was supposed to be parking overflow, right? I mean, what do you guys, what do you guys think?
I just want to make sure we're still moving forward on it. That's my, that's all.
I don't, I don't think it's, and I don't even think that at this point, unless there's a particular reason that comes up, that I can see a problem with it. If the city maintains ownership of it, it doesn't really present a problem with the various projects. And then it doesn't, it doesn't become any, any conflict so much on territory in terms of who's using it. But, but just so we move, like I say, just so we keep moving forward with it. Because I think it's a great, you know, I think once, now everybody's seen with that gone, what the potentials are, and as you've said, what the potential is across the street, so that.
My only question would be, is if the city owns it and it's technically off-street parking, whose insurance is liable in case somebody's car gets broken into?
Well, the park, the depot, is that the county, isn't it? The Art Depot? Is that along with the county, correct?
Artists Association.
Artists Association of Randolph County. They possess that association with them, it seems.
I don't think it's, you gotta pause it. Probably not really much different than, than what they already have.
I think my question would be, ask for insurance company, would it be a problem? I mean, if not, the city can hold on to it. I just.
We've got parking over here. We've got Broadway.
Yeah.
So.
I don't want any more cost to be incurred if we can avoid it. Other than that, there's still a lot of places hiring. I know Randolph County has had issues with layoffs and things. If you are still looking for employment, hopefully we've got jobs around. I know when, before this closed down, Just Lane was hiring, Frank Miller was hiring, Milestone for, all through the summer for temp help, Silver Town is a nearby one. And then Pearl Street, I can't remember the name of that company right now. Russ Hodges, Union City Assembly's hiring, so I don't know. I like to be a job resource. So if you're watching and need a job, there you got some options. But that's it.
Excellent. Good job. Bob?
The Area Planning Commission meeting that was supposed to be held last week on the 27th, 22nd was canceled and they're hoping to have one next month in May due to the current situations. Other than that, there's nothing to report.
Appreciate that. Brandon?
Uh, just a couple of things. So pollution solution is currently closed and will remain so and while we're under the state homeowners until they're lifted, they'll remain closed. A couple of other things, the, I mentioned that last meeting that our Randolph County Solid Waste Management Board meeting was canceled for April. We are planning to meet on May the 4th, whether that's in person over in Winchester or if it's through a Zoom meeting. But we have some business to take, to take up, including determinations on the grants and scholarship recipients. So that is kind of a timely thing that we need to, to take care of. And then another decision that was made while everything is kind of in shutdown is that we've noticed higher traffic at the recycling bins over at the school. So they've actually upped the number of pulls for those recycling bins. They were previously Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. They've also included a Saturday pull. So that's probably a good thing for our community with the, out of the Lincoln Dale Plaza, when that went going out. I think people have kind of flocked to this one at the school, so. Then the, the only other thing here, the next kind of event for the Randolph County Solid Waste Management Group is a tire collection on June the 13th. So I'm kind of planning accordingly for that. If you've got some old tires that you need to get recycled, so.
What was the date on that?
Uh, June the 13th and I'll, I'll remind folks a little bit closer in the meeting before that one. But just, that's kind of the next event that was on the, the schedule for them. They had a, a paper shred event that was canceled on April 25th, I believe, the next one. They've rescheduled that for June the 20th. But again, I'll, I'll remind folks closer to that time period when those events come up. But that's the next one, is the tire collection.
Derek, you have some?
Yeah, I have a question for Brandon.
Yeah, sure.
I didn't realize that you were on the Solid Waste Management Board, I assume. I applied for the scholarship that you gave, I'm not a high school senior. Do you have any idea potentially when decisions? I assume that's why.
The May the 4th meeting is when we're gonna review the applicants.
To look over the applications. So sometime after May 4th, okay. Yeah, originally, I don't know what lady I had spoken to, but she told me.
Sandra Solomon or?
Yeah, I think so. And she had told me like late April, early May. And I hadn't heard anything. So I was like, oh, I wonder what happened to that. So, okay. You help me out there. No conflict of interest.
Yeah, the plan was to make the decisions in April, but the meeting got canceled, yes.
Okay.
Still plenty of time to bribe you.
I was waiting for a quote. What was your favorite restaurant?
Yeah, exactly. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Well, that's, that's actually, your information's a good segue too, something I, that Tim brought for me to remind everyone. We've added a dumpster date because we actually had a member of, actually a spouse of one of our community employees, city employees bring up that so many people being children replaced, they're cleaning out stuff and they're needing to get rid of stuff and what matter time and now. So we are actually having a dumpster that will be provided May 8th and 9th. Was it now? It was Friday and, it was a Friday and Saturday, that second weekend. It was a weekend right before Mother's Day.
Friday and Saturday before Mother's.
Correct.
Night, eighth and ninth.
Yeah. Yes, eighth and ninth. Eighth and ninth of May, there'll be, the city dumpsters will be available for community cleanup.
Can we get them on social media and?
Yes, they were put on Facebook, Nate or, I don't know.
Rob?
Kobe. Sorry. And we'll get Bob to put on Facebook as well. And Brian will put it on Kiss TV, Facebook and post on Kiss TV and, man, I thought I had the sign.
Charades. I think he says the sign board outside.
I'm sorry.
Two points.
Oh, good. Yeah. Well, I'm sorry. He was sitting there. Looks like Darth Vader backed under the mask he's doing this.
At least we still have, still have our humor.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. So yeah, we're supposed to have a sign. We can get it on the digital side for the fire department and we'll have it posted on Facebook. So May 8th and May 9th will be the first cleanup. The city dumpsters available. And so this is a great time. I think I encouraged this some time ago, early on when they first ordered the children placed. This is a great time to do cleanup in and around your property, to get a jumpstart on things. I told my wife the other day, I said, I've got a lot that I normally have done this time of year because I'm not going to track meets, I'm not going to this, that, and the other, which is unfortunate, but at least it's the opportunity to do other things, so. So please take advantage of those cleanup dates. And then the second cleanup dates will be the first weekend after Memorial Day.
Where will the dumpsters be?
Down by the South Howard, where they normally are.
I know. I just wanted to.
Yeah, no, no, I like the address down there in South Howard.
426?
426, is that right? 426 South Howard. So where the normal disposal brush and debris and so forth is. So the good thing you're bringing that up and a good, good question.
Another thing, Robert, right now the announcement is that you want to mention a cookbook.
Oh, gosh. Yes. Yes. And there is also a cookbook for sale, not like a morning rating or something. Sorry. Our chief of police, his wife, and some friends of hers, they developed a cookbook. And the money, can't recall, what was the money that raised the money for it? It doesn't go to them.
It goes Legion.
Legion, thank you. Goes to the Legion. So they raised the money for the Legion, which obviously, you know, is serving our soldiers and their families, both here and well. So it's an awesome endeavor. So if you want to get ahold of the police department and ask for your $10 cookbook, I've heard there's some amazing recipes in there and you can feel good about too because not only do you get good recipes, but $10 of your money will go toward military and families and helping them with the Legion. So a great endeavor. So appreciate that. Is there anything else?
That's all I got.
No, that's all. Appreciate it.
I didn't have anything to add.
Yeah. No, that's awesome. Appreciate it. We do not have, I think, chamber updates for old business. New business, we actually, I think we need to table the first two. The water deposit policy. We actually are getting a little bit more refined language on that. And so we'll fill you guys in at the next meeting, probably, hopefully, what that language looks like, that it'd be much more specific. And the hazard pay, we're also, through the board works, we've tabled that because we just don't have enough information yet with the pandemic with what we're looking at. Because there were some decisions made from the county level that we're just not able to make right now, so. So we can address the park ordinance to address vandalism. We wanted to get your guys' thoughts in a minute on this. The, we had the lights that were cut in January and then to turn out, if you're familiar, if you're familiar, not the, the enclosed shed, if you will, that runs the laser shed. Darren operates out of that entire contraction was stolen, trailer and all. Yeah. And the trailer was, the shed, sound trailer, the shed itself was just discovered down a country road on Facebook when Darren realized it was missing. They started throwing out messages. And then people started responding, like, wait a second, I've seen that. It's down this road. So it had been there a while, but nobody knew. And Darren hadn't been going out to the community Christmas barn for anything, so he just assumed it was still parked there. And I have to admit, I've been out to the park pretty much every week doing this, that, and the other. But I don't go on the, you know, the west side of the building, where it's set. I don't go on the west side of the building. I go to the big door, open the door, go in, you know, so I know checking the west side. So I didn't know it wasn't there either. So we did have been gone for some time. Well, that began all the conversation, obviously, with the cameras. Actually, the cutting of the lights began the conversation with cameras. The stealing of the shed began the conversation of what do we do about further enhancing the security of our park? And is it really necessary to have it open until 11 o'clock on a November, December, January late night? That's, that was our consensus. It doesn't make sense. Why couldn't you close it at dark?
I would think all year round, really. I mean.
I thought it was dawn till dusk thing.
It says 1:00, actually, it was a sign.
Yeah, it does.
And Monty did a great job. He uncovered the fact it's not even in our ordinances. So that's not even enforced by ordinance. Yeah, it's just a policy. So we actually, it would be who of us to develop an ordinance for the park and wrap a timeframe around it that makes sense to you guys for everybody's safety and the security of our park.
Right.
Yeah, Kobe's recommendation was that we set as far as an evening hour and that, you know, we talked about October through March.
March, correct.
And that is what, in board of works that we discussed. And like I say, this is all open to what council members want to do otherwise. But we, Kobe, one of these Kobe expressed was, because we talked about dusk or dark or something, but he'd like to have a set time. So you say seven, 7:30, something like that. Or that way his officers have an hour. If he, if they would end up in court with someone, well, you know, he engages this individual at 7:05. If the time's seven, then it's within that time, so the ordinance applies. So he'd have a set time. That way you don't have to worry about the.
Interpretation.
Having, having an argument there. And I think he was mainly looking at a tool to engage people and to where they're in violation of the ordinance. And then there would be obviously exceptions for things like community Christmas activities and various things like that that would be accepted. And I, you know, as just sitting here as a councilman, I just start, when you start talking about what time and you say 11, I'm not adverse to conversation about the bumping the time a little earlier through the summertime.
Well, that's what I said, all year round.
You said that, yeah, I don't have a problem with seeing.
There's no reason to be out there at 11 o'clock.
Yeah.
Anytime. There's nothing going on out at the park.
Your dad's always told us nothing good happened after 11 o'clock, midnight, whatever the particular time was. But they're usually right.
Yeah, certainly in this case, boy.
But yeah, so any input you guys have would be great.
What do you guys think? Does it make sense to have like a seasonal breakdown?
It could be earlier in the winter time.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we talked about, like October through.
March.
March 1st, April, late, something like that. And that's flexible too, to, to set it up for a certain hour.
We could do it with the time change.
I was just thinking too.
You know, November to March. Whenever the time changes, then, you know, the hours go down.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
You skipped Bonnie, by the way.
Well, so the days are shorter, right? So like the sun goes down at like, what, 7 o'clock or something?
Dark and cold. There's no reason to be out there sledding, but still at dark, you know, there's no reason to. Maybe a little bit of sledding, but.
Well, and they talked about that too, sledding is being, because they do have a light out there.
They do have a light, yeah.
But again, Kobe did speak to it too. It's like, well, that's, that's an exception I can manage. There's kids out there sledding, but if there's someone sitting in their car near the community Christmas barn at 11:00 at night, something's not right.
Right. And you didn't have a problem at all with dealing with sledding and all.
Right. Well, I was just throwing in as an example of being out there for, you know.
Gotcha.
After hours possibly.
So what's a time you guys would suggest that you think we could come to a consensus with? Like 7 o'clock from November to March or 6 o'clock?
I wouldn't go any later than seven.
Yeah, no.
And I, you know, once you get to, once you get, well, once the time changes, it's by 6 o'clock, it's just about dark.
Yeah, it is.
So you could, I mean, we could go as far as 6 o'clock.
What do you guys think?
I mean, that's.
My only concern, and I agree, my only concerns is when it is still light out 6 o'clock and someone wants to take a walk and they feel like, that's my only concern, but I'm with you.
And maybe seven is manageable, just in that that's still early enough in the evening. That's usually not a big problem.
And if we have somebody patrolling out there between 6 and 7. Which I've asked Kobe to extend patrol all through the night, every, they're out there throughout the night now.
I, I, I think, and, excuse me, but I don't, don't read too much into this decision. If 6 o'clock is where everybody feels making six, because that's the tool that the officer can engage.
That's a great point.
The citizen and then make a determination as to whether or not their reasoning for being there after 6 o'clock.
Is reasonable.
Is reasonable. And if it is, our officers are. Is reasonable. And if it is, our officers are going to allow them to proceed with what they were doing. And if it isn't, they're going to make sure that they're leaving the park.
That's a great point. There's a, if there was an elderly couple that are finishing up their walk and it's 6:05, they're not going to be hunted down. So that's a great point. So yeah, I would be, obviously it's your guys' decision, but I would certainly be in favor of 6, once the time changes.
So this is winter hours, basically?
Yeah, November, December, March. From the time change, if you remember like Bob Brandon suggested, to the time change in spring. T W, you have any thoughts?
That sounds good to me.
What's the, I guess the morning hour then? Is it 7 to 7? Or what are we talking about on the side of it?
I don't know what the date, what the opening hour is. We have a.
At the board of works, we were discussing daylight.
Daylight.
But then we get back into the gray area.
I mean, to keep it simple, go 7 a.m. to 7 p.m. and just done with it.
I like that.
Okay.
That's good.
You know, and if somebody's out there at 6:15, because that's when they can walk, and the cop pulls up, they're going to say, well, this is the best time for us to walk. And they're going to let him walk. What we're doing is providing a black and white guideline for the people that are doing things that they should not be doing. We're not going to be harassing people with this. This is giving our officers the tool to, you know, make sure that people are doing what they're supposed to be doing.
So that's the winter hours. What about the summer hours then?
Yeah, that's a tough, that's a good one. Goodness gracious, it seems like it's light all day long in June.
The only thing I would say about your summer hours is curfew for the youth is 10. Because you've got closing in the park at 11. So it's kind of like we're in conflict.
7 to 10?
Probably earlier than that, because I think the sun comes up.
I know it does.
You know, I say, well, I'm up here at 6:30 and the sun's very close.
6 to 10?
6 to 10?
Yeah. And that makes sense to me.
I'd almost say 5 to 10. There's some people going to work at 6 and maybe they want to get their jog in. But again, it's, if they're just jogging, they're not causing.
Yeah. So 6 to 10 and 7 to 7? Is that what you guys are proposing?
Yeah, I was trying to think from the student perspective, because I know a lot of high school students enjoy, especially during the summer hours, going out to the park and playing basketball. And they usually, just from some of the people I know on the basketball team, they kind of go out after dinner in the evening. So if you add summer hours until 10 o'clock, or somewhere around there, I think that at least provides, you know, if people eat dinner at 6 o'clock or something, like at 7 o'clock. But at least gives them two, three hours where they can still go out and play without being too late. So I think 10 o'clock sounds like a perfect time, at least from the student side of it.
I appreciate that.
And I don't know that they're necessarily going to get, there's not going to be a police car sitting out there at 10 o'clock. Okay, guys, go home. We're in the court, yeah.
And of course, there'll be an exception if there's a fireworks display, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ending any.
Or hosted event or activity.
Any events.
Community Christmas, sledding. But again, to Steve's point, it gets the officers to be ameliorated.
Right.
To question. So gives them, gets some teeth to an ordinance that we need. So, so do you guys have that, if we're 6 to?
6 to 10, so.
6 to 10. Awesome. And I need to make a public statement of apology. I totally neglected our city manager and our city attorney on the agenda that I completely spaced. I am so sorry. Monty, did you, I think you'd like to share?
Really, the only thing that we have that request from Diane Evans, that photograph since you're around there. She's wanting to see about vacating that unimproved alley beside her house. So if the council doesn't have any problem with that, I'll go ahead and tell her to proceed with the notifications.
Can you surmise what that means?
Well, she'll have to send notice to the other adjoining property owners that there's an intent to vacate the alley. Normally, they get the attorney to do that for disposal.
What I was meaning by like vacate, like so she's currently responsible for it and she's asking to not be responsible for it?
No, she doesn't. Because there are some people that are kind of using it as an alley.
Okay.
And some nefarious activities are going on back there.
Where is this going to? Is this the park then?
No, that's just a farm field.
Oh, didn't mean the park. I guess the ball fields, the baseball fields.
Yeah, and it's back this way quite a bit from the farm, or from the baseball.
So I'm still lost. Are they trying to take ownership of this? They're just trying to make sure it's not an alley?
Yeah, when we part for property.
Not like a public alley.
Okay.
So who would own the property then?
Well, it normally goes, half of, half of it goes to adjoining property over here. Half goes to adjoining property owners on the other side.
Is the intent for the farmer to use that to get farmer equipment back in there?
Yeah. If you look at it right now, it just simply looks like it's the driveway for that alley. But no, they, they go far, the folks that own the brick house down there that's right at the dead end of South Walnut, they own that field. So of course, they've got all kinds of access to it.
I don't think, I don't go back there to the field directly now.
Really, no.
Would any of these other owners, sorry, would any of these other property owners have an issue with, I mean, because I could see maybe they would drive back there to access the back?
They would have that opportunity to, to say they don't want to. And normally, if somebody says they don't want to tap an adjoining property owner, it doesn't happen.
Right.
Is there fencing along this area right here?
No.
No, there's not? Okay. I couldn't really tell from the picture.
There is some fence. There's, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty rough. The back, there's, there is a building on one property that has had access to that at some point in time. It doesn't look like, the last time I was there, just making a delivery there, it didn't look like anybody had used access to the back of those, to the back of their properties in years. Didn't see any, any evidence that anybody had been through there in quite a long time. And this was she had asked me about it. And I told her, I said, well, the only thing is, is you basically normally split that. So she could negotiate and also negotiate with those other property owners about this too.
Is this, this house has been for sale, correct?
Yeah, it's sold.
Oh, it's sold. So I'm wondering if it was an issue in regards to the driveway and things like that, so.
Yeah. Yeah, sold and done renovation down there.
Okay.
I don't know. Are they occupying it yet or?
I think so. I think her sons are.
I haven't looked like, let's see if they're in. But that's been used that way for years.
Do we have a consensus on the willingness to, or proceed?
I find that.
So to make sure we're clear, if these people in these houses still.
They.
Right. They can contest.
Yeah, we don't have a final say on it.
Perfect. All right.
They object, they can stop.
Yeah, because I mean, it looks to me, it's like an alleyway that goes nowhere.
Yeah, it's just an unimproved alley.
Unfortunately, we have them all over.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we've got a consensus for, for you to proceed.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Just the sidewalk project is proceeding. They're laying curve there down on the north end of it and moving along pretty, pretty well.
It looks fantastic.
It's ahead of schedule, isn't it?
It's exciting.
I think so.
Yeah.
It's always good news.
Yeah.
They're ahead of schedule.
Because they were able to pour some concrete when they didn't think they'd be able to pour concrete.
And isn't it amazing, because we were talking about at the beginning of board works meeting, the wastewater project is still on schedule.
Yeah.
Still on schedule in the middle of pandemic and even having to be shut down for like a couple of days because of the fear of, you know, a case. And so we've been very fortunate and very blessed with these big projects going on pretty much unimpeded. So.
I've got a question for you two. You may know and you may not. Has any confirmed cases of COVID-19 actually appeared in Union City proper?
My knowledge of Union City proper, Steve, you probably have better insight for that than me.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
There has been one?
Okay.
So that would be one of the two, because we've had two in the county.
Yeah. Okay.
Not nobody's passed away in Union City. Right, right. So you kind of have a COVID case. Do you have a positive COVID case?
Okay.
But no deaths in Union City confirmed, which is very fortunate. Very, very fortunate.
One of our audience members made me think about that because we've got a success story.
He's a survivor.
Yeah.
Good to see him here.
Good genes.
Anything else, Ryan? My apologies again. So thank you so much. Ryan, anything you would like to share?
No.
We're saving the best for last.
All right. Well, the date of our next, well, first of all, I do have an investor to address council. If so, please rise and state your name.
My name is Santiago Jimenez Jr. And I'm a representative for the Winchester Council, District 3. And I'm also from Randolph County Marketing Committee with part-time mate. And I also do fireworks. And was interested if Union City is going to celebrate 4 July this year. I know it's way out there, but Winchester has a plan. And didn't know, Steve usually helps me out with the fireworks and where the money's coming. We decided in Winchester, WCCPC is not going to go out and solicit the businesses and the factories, you know? God was very good to us as WCCPC. We made some money from Artigro, and we're going to do a $5,000 show. Something is better than nothing. 4 July has to be celebrated, in my opinion. I know there's a lot of taxpayers that you're just throwing money and just, you know, you still have to celebrate 4 July. A lot of people died for us to have 4 July in. So I'm a true believer. So I'm just asking if Union City, usually you guys follow us or you guys in front of us. This year, 4 July is on a Saturday, and Winchester's going to have theirs to celebrate on a Saturday, July 4. We have three plans, you know, depends what they say this coming Friday, the governor at 2:30. And we'll see, you know, by the time it gets to July 4. But we have three plans ready to put in so we can still celebrate. Same way, I'm the president of the cemetery, Palt Park Cemetery. And I'm a true believer on celebrating Memorial Day. And we're going to have something out there. And I know that a lot of people are still frightened. And that's okay. But I believe because I did contract it, I fought it about dying. But I still, with God's willing, you know, gave me the, the will to live. So I'm doing all this stuff because I still have something to do down here in the earth. So we're still going to have a celebration, little, with just some dignitaries and give the respect out there to the cemeteries for all those people that's out there. So, and that's going to be on Memorial Day at 1 o'clock. So we just got a Plan A, Plan B, and Plan C out there. But the purpose was for me to come down here and see how another city runs their business, who's involved, young, youth, that's great. So I'm just going to take this information back to Winchester, see if we can get ours back. And I know that there's a lot of people outside these windows and they would love to come in here and just give their opinions. But it's best to do the opinions while you see the people out there wearing a mask and, you know, whatever. Just take the proper PPE out there, bring the complaints. And you guys all said that somebody said, somebody, you know, and you brought it out. You're still doing your job. So I'm really grateful for how you guys are still meeting. Winchester, all we got is a fire, fire building that could do about as big as this. Our city hall's not very big. But we'll see how we're going to do, you know, this coming, this coming Monday. But just, we just wanted to find out if you guys want to celebrate.
I appreciate that. And that short answer, that's the plan. Steve and I actually were talking about this the other day, in terms of parking arrangements and how we can pull this off. Because I guess I envision, for lack of a better answer right now, because obviously a lot is changing on a daily basis. But I picture something of a drive-in theater type situation where, you know, we're even spaced apart and everybody gets to enjoy a great show. Because we certainly have the ground, we're blessed with the ground to do so. Assuming Mother Nature doesn't, you know, rain holy terror on us that we should bring. Do you guys have any thoughts and opinions on that break now and speak?
Do it.
Do it?
Yeah, just do it.
Do it?
Do it.
Do it? Right. It's like, whatever.
Sorry. I mean, we have the funds begun in the past, right?
What's that? I'm sorry.
Are the funds there to do it? I mean?
Yeah. Well, Steve, what was the discussion we had the other day in terms of?
The general consensus is, and Brian, we really like to break the house. The general consensus is historically, the city has given to the fireworks effort. The fire department, the police department generally run a boot drive or two to try to raise some funds. That's going to look pretty different, because we generally try to start doing that sometime Memorial Day weekend, where we'll be out on the, on the street for a couple of days. You know, not sure how that's going to look just yet. But I still believe it's socially distanced. I still believe it's possible to do it. So between the collaboration of the city and then throwing some money at it, go some fundraising, yes, I believe we generally spend somewhere in the neighborhood of $6,000 to $8,000 a year on fireworks. I believe, I have no reason to believe that that's not possible this year. Our concern, after reading some of the cancellation notices of the 4th of July events, was not that we couldn't hold the celebration. It was that there was going to be no product to light off. But between Jim and Sky Magic, they've assured us that they have product to light off. So because of that fact alone, I say, bolstering ahead and we'll figure out, put it, put it on.
Jim? Yes. Thank you. And so good to see you.
Yep. Just a clarification, the date that we're. July 5th, just so our.
July 5th.
Be Sunday, be Sunday night.
Sunday, July 5th. And we do have a full day's event planned. We have music booked. We have food trailers. We have all kinds of stuff planned, disc golf tournament, three-on-three basketball. But obviously, all of those activities are kind of up in the, up in the air. I think we reworked up the slogan on the snowgoes. So all those things were, were already in place. It's just a matter of what we can and what we can't do.
And regarding, this is a great time too. Tim had other great suggestions. He just pulled up great suggestions to just light stuff to me. With everybody being home now and credit some, some households, things are really tight right now. And we understand that. God bless you. And we expect anything by way of long enough to ask. But if you, if you're in a household where you're blessed with employment or blessed with funds, he had a great suggestion of starting a social media drive now. So Kiss TV, Facebook, our website. And what would be the best place for people to give, do you think, Steve, right now?
The best thing to do is just call the police department if you would like to give. Kristy was going to work on setting up a fundraiser on Facebook, but I don't think she's got that done yet. But she worked. That's on the things to do list. And just one more thing also, just so everybody knows, Saturday evening, I believe the chief of police will be escorting Dyslexic Funk on a flatbed trailer around town playing music. We want to start our music event and we want to get things off to a fantastic start for the summer season. And we want to start making everybody happy again. So that's, it's going to be a little weird. I'm not sure what the route is. They contacted us and we're going to put them on a trailer. And I think we're going to escort them around the different neighborhoods in town. And they're just going to play a little mini concerts all over these things.
When's this going to be?
Saturday evening, I believe. Saturday evening, I believe.
This Saturday? Good.
Yep.
Oh, this Saturday? Wow.
So, yeah, so police department, you can call there and we will have it up online here shortly for people to be able to get it. Yes, Jim?
As Steve knows, that once we load them, rain or shine, they go up.
Awesome.
It's safer that way.
Awesome.
Plus, you know, it just, you just need to celebrate.
Yes.
There's a lot of things that we need to celebrate in Randolph County and Union City and Winchester that we're moving forward. We're not letting this, you know, bring us down. We still have the spirit. As Hoosiers, that's one thing that the Hoosier does. They just keep on going forward.
Well put, well put, absolutely. And we will absolutely come out of it. And you're a great testimony to that right now, so. All right, well, any other visitors wishing to address council? If not, the date of the next city council meeting will be Monday, May 11th at 6 p.m. Probably right here, but if not, up 40 feet that way. And the date of the next board of public works meeting will be also Monday, day 11th at 1 p.m. I would hereby entertain a motion for adjournment. We have first or a second?
Oh, second.
Always in favor, say aye. Say nay.
Aye.
Meaning adjourned.